The first item on the agenda is public comment on any item not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak on a matter not listed on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, before we continue with the agenda, I'll introduce the members of the committee. We have Supervisor El Matano, Supervisor Dennis Loughlin, Supervisor Jerry Bullock, I'm the Chair of the Committee, Supervisor Mary Colar, and we may be joined by Supervisor Patrick Miles shortly. Also with us are Roger Lane, the Zoning Administrator, Dan Everson, the Assistant Zoning Administrator, Todd Vialante, I think, is here. Todd helping people, he's the Director of Planning and Development, and we have with us this evening our Youth Governance Member, Sam Fisher. So, the way that we operate this meeting, the committee will be conducting a public hearing on zoning petitions and conditional use permit applications. Any persons wishing to speak in favor or in opposition, again, must fill out one of those white registration forms and submit the sheet to the staff. When a petition is called, the petitioner will be asked to come to this table up here and have a seat and address the committee members. We accept that petitioner state their name, address, the petition request, and reasons for the request. The petitioner will be given up to five minutes to address the committee. The order of the registrants is as follows: after the petitioner or agent, any other persons wishing to speak in favor; then persons wishing to speak in opposition. All speakers will be given five minutes to speak. If there is opposition, the petitioner or agent will be given an additional opportunity at the end of the public hearing to provide a rebuttal to the opposition. The petitioner will be given three additional minutes. Again, all speakers will address the committee members seated here in front of this room. There will be no running debate. The committee will not take action on a petition until the applicable town has filed a report with the zoning division. The deadline for the towns to submit an action report to the county is the Thursday prior to this meeting date. Public testimony will be taken at this meeting, however, if town action has not been received, a decision will be made at a subsequent meeting. If there is public opposition on a petition, the petition will be postponed until the next meeting of the committee. This will give the petitioner, opposition, and staff an opportunity to work out matters between parties. If the town's action has been submitted and there is no opposition to a petition, the committee may act on the petition and refer the petition to the full county board. If the committee passes the petition unanimously, your presence at the county board may not be necessary. However, if the petition is controversial, it is advised that you attend the county board meeting. Committee action on conditional use permits is the final action of the county. These applications are not referred to the full county board. The petitions which are recommended for approval will be placed on the March 15th County Board Agenda. The next ZLR Committee meeting is March 13th. Okay, our first petition is for a rezone, it's 11-240, Scott Frank, in the town of Cottage
Hi.
Hi there. Yeah, we're trying to rezone it, we're trying to carve out two acres for my oldest son to be able to build on the land, and then we'd be rezoning that part A2, and then the rest of that would be A2 some too.
I assume you're Scott Frank?
I am, sorry.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to tell us?
No. Obviously, we'd like to leave the rest set aside so it doesn't get developed and keep it in the family for all 70 acres of woods and farmland.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The town of Cottage Grove has approved this petition with an amendment. They wish to change the remaining property to A-4 agriculture to prohibit residential development.
Supervisor Bullock.
I'll make a motion to approve as stated.
Second. With a condition?
With a condition.
So, we, and are you familiar with the condition?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve with a condition, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, next is petition 11,241, Pleasant Time Holdings, in the town of Medina.
Hi, my name's John Ward, I own Pleasant Time Holdings. With my wife, we're looking to purchase land that I own a rental property on, that my daughter currently lives in, and add, so you can make it basically be four acres, so I can zone it to RH2. And, um, so right now, it's currently R1, an exclusive, or Ag1 exclusive, we'd be going to RH2 with it when we have the CSM made at over four acres.
Anything else you'd like to add? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The town of Medina has approved this petition, conditioned upon the animals, the town of Medina, animal restrictions being imposed on the property.
Second. With those restrictions.
We have a motion and a second to approve with the restrictions, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? And it's approved. Next, we have rezoned petition 11-242. We have Scott Troutman, in the town of Pleasant Springs.
I'm David Bakuba, I'm the agent for Scott Troutman, we're buying the land that he's selling. We are rezoning from A1X to A2 for the purpose of creating one residential lot. We'll be farming there.
Anything else you'd like to add? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The town of Pleasant Springs has approved this petition, conditioned upon a deed restriction being recorded on the balance of the A1 exclusive land prohibiting further residential development. They would also like a deed restriction placed on the proposed A2 property to prohibit land divisions of the, or future land divisions of the property.
Move approval with the two conditions, group. Deed restrictions?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve with conditions and deed restrictions, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? And it's approved. You're welcome, thanks for coming. Next, we have rezoned petition 11,243, Carla Joy Rotz, in the town of Vermont.
I'm Carla Rotz, and this is my husband, Jim. We have 18.2 acres in the town of Vermont, and it's primarily wooded and currently used for recreational purposes. We'd like to rezone it to A2, so we could construct a storage shed and maybe eventually a residence.
Anything else you'd like to add? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The town of Vermont has approved this petition with no conditions.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? And it's approved. Okay, do you have 11,244? Okay, next is petition 11,244, Pete Andringa, in the town of Cottage Grove.
Hi, I'm Sarah Lessner, this is my husband, Justin. We are here for, we're buying the land from Peter Andringa. It's 40 acres on Ridge Road, currently zoned A1 exclusive, and we'd like to rezone four acres to A2 in order to put a residential, a single-family residence, and eventually a shop space on it.
Just if I could, it carries pretty well, so if, we need to hear the petitioners, thank you. Okay, anything else? No? Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The town of Cottage Grove has approved this petition, conditioned upon that the right-of-way be dedicated to the town. Staff is suggesting that a deed restriction be placed on the remaining A1 exclusive agricultural lands to prohibit further residential development. Housing density rights on this property have been exhausted.
Move approval with the two conditions.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve with the two conditions. Supervisor Bullock.
Yes, are you aware of the deed restriction, and you're in agreement with it?
Yeah, we just have the one deed, just the one.
We can build the one home, and then that was...
Okay, as long as you're aware of it.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? And it's approved. You're welcome, thanks for coming. Next is rezoned petition 11,245, Norman Stam, in the town of Verona.
Norman Bonnie Stam, 67, drawl, Redstone Lane, Verona. We're petitioning to have three lots rezoned from A22 to RH1, reason being that the allowable for A22 are not desirable, so we want to sell off one of the lots, so that's why we're doing it.
Anything else you'd like to add? Anything else you'd like to add?
No, that's it.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The town of Verona has approved this petition with no conditions.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? It's approved. Thank you. Next is rezoned petition 11,246, Dennis Reisdorf, in the town of Rutland.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Dennis Reisdorf, at 1190 Sunrise Road. We're looking to combine two lots into one.
Anything else you'd like to add? Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The town has approved this petition with no conditions.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? And it's approved. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Next is rezoned petition 11,247, John Ziegler, in the town of Rutland.
John and Sandra Ziegler, 1256 Highway 14, Rutland. Current zoning LC1. Want to split off a piece to R1A home. We sold our home in Brooklyn, it's 28 years. We're going to build a small, we'd like to build a small home on this property.
Anything else you'd like to add?
He doesn't have his ears.
Oh, okay.
Anything else you want to add?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The town of Rutland has approved this petition. Staff is recommending several conditions based on this being a transfer of development rights. Basically, the, uh, the housing density right is being transferred from Section 10 over to Section 7. So, the deed restrictions would be as follows: deed restriction being recorded on the sending property to prohibit residential development, a deed notice on the sending property saying that one housing density right was transferred, and a notice document on the subject property indicating that it was established with a transfer of development right.
Supervisor Bullock.
Yes, you focus on where with all the conditions?
Yeah.
Are you, and you're okay with it? Okay, very good, I'll make a motion to approve with the, with the staff conditions. Second. And just wondering if the town is aware of all this?
Oh yeah, they have approved it, so they recommended that, uh, the area in Section 10 is a high-quality agricultural lands, and they really don't want a house over there. So, they want a house. Well, I think you purchased it or negotiated a deal for the housing density right that you placed here.
And we have the motion and the second, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? And it's approved. Next is rezoned petition 11,248, Donald Parle, in the town of Vermont.
I'm Don Parle, 45, 43, Blue Moons Trail, Black Earth, town of Vermont, and I'm trying to rezone to get my daughter to move up next to me from Iowa.
Very good, anything else you'd like to add?
No, it should be it.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The town of Vermont has approved this petition with no conditions. I also know that the deed notice has been recorded on the property, and the deed restriction is to be recorded tomorrow, and it's sitting right in my case there, which I will personally take to the register of deeds to be recorded. So, that is to make the previous petition effective.
I'll move approval with those conditions.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve with the conditions, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is rezoned petition 11,249, Joseph Swartson, LLC, in the town of Vermont.
My name's Joe Schwartz, and I represent Joseph M. Schwartz &amp; Sons, Inc. We're looking to rezone a piece of property, three acres, north of 4473 Blue Moons Trail, Section 9, town of Vermont. Purpose is to get three acres from A1 over to residential, so we can build a four-bedroom home for my son.
Okay, anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The town of Vermont has approved this petition with no conditions.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? It's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is 11,250, Controlled Surface Finishing, Inc., in the town of Dunkirk.
Hello, I'm Steve Tortorese, and I'm representing Controlled Surface Finishing, and they're changing what the proposal is to change the two lots, one is a C2, and one is a C1, into both of them to C2, and then an additional residential lot in the middle.
Anything else? Anyone wishing, else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
Yes, there was some concerns with this petition, changing everything to C2, left the single-family house in the center to be non-conforming, uh, land use, so the petition was amended to carve off the house on a approximately two-acre lot, and amend the zoning to A2 parent 1. This has been discussed with the town of Dunkirk. The town of Dunkirk has approved the amendment to, um, have the house in the A21 zoning district. Staff is suggesting three conditions be placed on this petition. The first one, to amend the rezoned petition to allow 1.8 acres to the A2 parent 1 agriculture zoning district. The second one, the applicant shall coordinate with Wisconsin DOT with regards to safe ingress, egress, or access restrictions on the property. Third one is requiring a deed restriction for a proposed lot, that is the C2, to limit the commercial uses exclusively to the following, like manufacturing, assembly plants, machine shops, distribution centers, into dental warehousing, and indoor storage, offices, and office buildings, and also to prohibit the installation of off-premise advertising signs or billboards.
Move approval as amended by the town, and with two additional conditions, and recommended by staff.
I'll second. So, we have a motion and a second to approve as amended and with the conditions, any further discussion? You're aware of them?
Yes.
Good with that. Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next is rezoned petition 11,251, John Moore Schauscher, in the town of Deerfield.
Good evening, I'm John Moore Schauscher, this is my wife Judy. We're here on this here parcel. We live at 1354 Burb Road, which is right across from this property. I now farm this piece. My daughter and son-in-law are outgrowing where they're at, they like to move closer to where they grew up, and we have, we also have to change, we guys were that RH1, but now that remaining parcel is under the 35 acres, so we have to zone that to, we're going to go for A4 on that piece.
Anything else you'd like to add? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The town of Deerfield has approved this petition with no conditions.
Uh, move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, thanks for coming. Next is rezoned petition 11,253, the Schrader Living Trust, in the town of Dane.
Good evening, folks. Roger, thank you for all your help.
No problem.
Appreciate it. Okay, I'm Jerry Aker, Middleton, Wisconsin, this is my son Cory Aker. What we're proposing today is the property at 7108 Labina Road, to go from A-21 agricultural district to LC-1 limited commercial district. What we have now is a small excavating business, and we're real close to being developed on our family farm, so we're looking to relocate. That's what we're trying to do.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The town of Dane will be taking up this matter next week, and this could possibly be placed on the March 13th Agenda for Action.
Move pause.
We have a motion and a second, and Supervisor Miles.
Just a quick question, and the staff in RSC referenced the fact that CUP will be required for, um, our residence, so that'll be an item that'll come under separate public hearing.
That's correct. In the offer of the purchase, mostly all the buildings were removed, and then he decided to remove the single-family house as well and not reside in it, so we're into the limited commercial, because there's just going to be a large building and his business there. And then in the future, if someone decides to reside on the property, they could come in and get a conditional use permit for a single-family residence for the owner of the business.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, you understand that our rules are, if the town hasn't taken action, we postpone.
Yes.
Okay. On the motion postponed, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? And it's postponed.
Okay. Thanks very much.
You're welcome. Okay, now we have conditional use permit 02406, in the Toad Hill Children's House, in the town of Blooming Grove.
I'm Rebecca Katzenmeyer. I am looking to sort of, I guess, amend our conditional use permit from a few years ago. We have a Montessori school that is currently allowed to serve up to 40 children. We are looking to increase the number to 90 children and to allow for elementary and adolescent programming in addition to early childhood.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, and, um, I'll call up the others who have registered to speak in support. Okay. Have Emily Steinway, Steinway?
Steinway.
You just wanted to...
I support a Montessori school at this location.
Okay, thank you. And April Netz?
Should I come up, or just?
It's up to you.
I am April Netz, I will be the elementary teacher for next year, I'm assuming we are approved for that. I have taught elementary Montessori education for three years, in youth education, as well as community service, is a big part of Montessori philosophy, as well as my personal pedagogy and philosophy, so I think having more children at the school, serving a larger age range, would be really beneficial to the community and the neighborhood and the school that we serve.
Okay, thank you. Also, wishing to speak in support, and if you would come up please, if you want to speak, or just let us know that you're supporting, is Tara Von Dolan.
You got it right. My name is Tara Von Dolan, and I live at 5121 Hackney Way in Madison, that's about a mile from the school, and I fully support expanding the Montessori programming at that location.
Okay, thank you. Okay, also registered in support are Ann Newman, Jody Zaha.
Hi.
And we have Ellie Katzenmeyer, registered in support, and also registered in support are Lenny Jenkins. Also Kathleen McHugh?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, did you want to speak?
No.
Okay. Registering in support. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, Roger.
I don't have anyone registered.
Oh, oh, I thought she was. Okay. The town of Blooming Grove has approved this petition with no conditions. Staff is suggesting, however, that the petition be postponed in order to obtain a operations plan. The, the plan that was submitted was a little rough, it needed to show the parking, as well as the additional building. The petitioner is working on that. We have a rough draft, but I would really like to have the operations plan intact when the ZLR Committee makes a recommendation on it.
Supervisor Bullock.
Yes, do you understand?
Yes.
What the staff is saying?
Yes, I do.
You agree with it?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to postpone pending the site plan, then.
Second. We have a motion and a second to postpone until our staff receives the site plan, further discussion, questions of the petitioners?
Yeah. I don't think the word is site plan, it's an ops plan, it's an operations plan.
It's an operations plan and a site plan. It shows the activity areas where the children, outside area, the parking area, and the proposed building. And if it's turned in next week, it'll be on the March 13th Agenda.
Do I need to return for the March 13th meeting?
It's up to you. If people have questions, it's helpful.
Okay. I don't have to bring all these people. Thank you.
Yeah, you've sent a message. Any further discussion? Any further discussion on the postponement? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's postponed. Next is CUP 02407, Cambridge School District in the town of Christiana.
Good evening, Michael Romper represents the school district. Bernie Nicolay is a superintendent of schools at Cambridge.
Hi, how are you?
We're here on the conditional use application that we previously submitted. There are attachments there, been approved by plan commission, been approved by the town board. I did send email to Mr. Codel and copied in Mr. Lane, just for clarification purposes on the conditions, and we're here to answer any questions. The, the parcel has been owned by the school district since the eighties. It has been used for agricultural purposes through the school, for educational purposes. The school is creating a charter school for this property. There's a limitation placed on up to 50 students, so it'll be an educational-based, ecology-based charter school on this ADA group parcel.
Anything else you'd like to add?
I would, it's agriculture and environmentally-based, project-based learning school. We anticipate 11 to 25 students in the first year, and up to 40 students in grades seven through 10 in the first year, and then as those 10th graders get to be 11 and 12, we'll expand those two grades.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The town of Christiana has approved this petition with five conditions, and staff is suggesting five conditions be placed on the conditional use permit.
You're aware of the conditions?
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna move approval with the conditions.
We have a motion and a second to approve with the conditions. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's approved.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Next is CUP 02408, James Ace in the town of Dunn.
Hi, James, 1825 Green Road, looking to get a conditional use permit for parking my commercial semis on my property.
Okay, anything else you'd like to add?
That should be it.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The town has approved this petition with conditions. There are five conditions suggested by the staff which incorporate the town's conditions.
Are you okay with it?
Yep.
No problem.
Approval for five conditions.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve with the conditions.
Real quick, Roger, and at least in my version, the town action report might, that's not an action.
Okay, I'll have to take a look at that.
Oh, on the town action.
Town action.
Yeah, on the cover sheet, you must have said.
Right, right.
Well, I want to see if there's any remarks from the town.
Okay, any further?
One, there's not one.
Any further discussion on the motion to approve with conditions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
Thank you.
Next is CUP 02409, town of Blooming Grove.
Hi, Mike Wolf, we're treasurer of Blooming Grove. This particular building on this land was used by a former sanitary district that went out of business last year. I want the town to take ownership of it, and we're kind of working a deal out with the city for its use, for, for them to lease out for purposes of an art studio, something like that that would work out, so we need a CUP to do that.
Okay, anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Okay, I also have registered in support Cassandra Orstmeyer, and also registered in support Mark Penniston, and available for any questions is Jewel Stroick. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The town of Blooming Grove has approved this petition with no conditions. Staff is suggesting six conditions be placed on this conditional use permit.
Are you familiar with the conditions?
Am I?
I'll read them, just to make sure. Hours of operation shall be 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, seven days a week. The artist shall have access to studio 24/7. There shall be no outdoor storage. There will be no outdoor lighting beyond what's already present. There shall be no outside loudspeakers. The permit period shall be 10 years from the date of approval.
All set?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions.
We have a motion and a second to approve with the conditions. Any discussion? Go ahead.
I am more than just giving you permission, I think this is great. I read about it in the paper, and it sounds like it's gonna be a real asset, so thank you.
Any further discussion or comment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Next is CUP 02410, Lawrence Teeman in the town of Cross Plains.
Hello, I'm Lawrence Teeman. Would like a conditional use permit for a private dog park.
Anything else you'd like to add?
The property is currently a tree nursery, and we'll have that operation going on as well.
Okay, great. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The town of Cross Plains has approved this petition, conditioned upon requiring fencing, insurance, parking, and hours of operation. In your staff report, staff is suggesting 11 conditions, however, the condition number 10, which reads shade, drinking water, and benches, that'll be provided for the parking on the dog park site. The applicant has chosen not to have that condition, based on the fact of providing water to public, has a whole bunch of rules and regulations. So staff does not see a problem with eliminating condition number 10.
I'm gonna move approval with the 10 condition, not 11.
I'll second that. I have a question. How does a, I've never heard of a private dog park before.
Well, it will, people will apply that they have proof of vaccinations and insurance and listing.
So it'll be like a membership or something?
Right.
Okay, members only.
Right.
We're gonna be selected.
Oh, no, that's, that's fine, I just, it's unique to me, so, thanks.
Further discussion? We did have the motion to approve with the conditions, yes, you did.
Yeah, I second.
Okay. Anything else? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next we have petitions from previous meetings. Petition rezoned 11,221 in you, Liam, in the town of Christiana. Roger.
Yes, this petition was postponed at the December 11th, 2017 zoning and land regulation committee due to no town action. Since that time, the town has taken action on it. They have approved this petition with no conditions.
Approval, second. We have a motion and a second to approve, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's approved. Okay. And then next is CUP 02405, Kirk Ellenfelt in the town of Cottage Grove. Roger.
Yes, this petition was postponed at the January 23rd, 2018 zoning and land regulation committee meeting due to public opposition. The town has approved this petition with various conditions. There were quite a few concerns at the public hearing that are listed in the staff report. Both the applicant is here, and persons in opposition are here. Both parties have submitted supplemental materials that have been placed in the folders in percommittee rules. In order to take that additional supplemental material, a motion needs to be made by the zoning and land regulation committee to place those into the official record.
So for clarity, everything that's linked in our package has been received to date? There isn't anything?
Yes, there are two items that are in opposition, and one supplement in support, clarifying or addressing concerns.
I'll make a motion to include the new items into the record?
Second. We have a motion and a second to include the additional items, the supplemental information that is in our packet, in its entirety, I assume? Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, and it's approved to have all the items that are in our packet.
I would move to suspend the rules to take five minutes of testimony from both sides of the argument.
And you want to hear from everyone, or like one?
Five minutes total, per side.
Per side?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Sweeney is here to speak in support, and Ms. Westerberg is here to speak in opposition.
So we have a motion and a second to have five minutes from one person in support and one person in opposition, and we have the people who have been selected. So on the motion, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
I'd like to defer, Wade Cattell would like to speak instead of.
You're good with that? It's the opposition, so I think Roger is, yeah, trying to be helpful, but as long as we have one person in support and one person from opposition. Yes?
Yeah, I'm just moving one, one per side.
Very good, thank you. So just confirm, we have approval of that, suspension of rules to here. Mr. Cattell, would you like to come up?
I'd like to address the concerns that were brought up at the last meeting. The first concern was the close proximity to Door Creek and the impact on the aquifer. In your packet, you will have a letter from Michael Siliger and Associates assessing the runoff and letting you know that that won't be an issue. The second concern was loud backup alarms at our existing pit. I've attached in your pamphlet quotes to replace the existing backup alarms with directional backup alarms, which means when the piece of equipment is not facing to the rear towards you, it's, it's controlled noise and directional. This also can be adjusted, so that we, we're gonna put that on all of our equipment. We're gonna reroute traffic patterns so that the unloaders tend to point towards the homes and the noise goes to the back away. Concerns, perceived concerns on increase in activities, in your packet, there's actual load counts for the past three years under our management, and it actually shows a considerable reduction in activities. 2015, our concrete plant produced 2,042 loads, 2016, 1,716 loads, 2017, 3,400, total 2,400 of concrete and 850 to 1,000 loads of dirt. The previous owner's history between 2009, we estimated approximately 6,350 loads per year. We are considerably less than the previous owner that was in there. Additionally, in the past, the app, I, we only operated approximately eight months per year while the previous owner operated 12 months per year. I do have the supporting documents for all of that with. Dust control and dust issues, we utilize the best management practices. In your packet that we submitted, we showed all our water logs. The first 300 feet from Highway 12 to the gate is asphalt, and then we have approximately 500 feet of crushed asphalt beyond, and it's watered on a daily basis, backed up with the water logs. Noise concerns, there's a very large berm between the quarry and all adjacent houses. There's an attached map that actually notes the decibel levels during the operation. I understand that the study was done by Dane County staff, and the, any noise from the mineral extraction does not, is not distinguishable between the ambient noise from Highway 12. Lack of notification, we adhere to a very strict notification protocol. Notifications at all times have been adequate. I always notify the town and the neighbors in writing when notification is required. Please note that we have not done any night work since 2013, and a copy of the notification is in your packet. Concerns on hours of operation, we work within the agreed-upon hours. At times, we've operated in its, we've operated in the legal non-conforming site after hours. This involves employees driving into the site to pick up their personal vehicles occasionally when working out of town. Does not include any construction equipment being utilized in any manner. It is allowable per our agreement and is the exception rather than a rule. We make every effort to minimize this. I do have my plant form in here, if you would have any questions for how we actually operate that. And the, also is the last, one of the last concerns is the reduced land value. We had an accredited appraiser, Mr. Scott McWilliams, do an appraisal on the subject property. The appraisal is attached to your pamphlet. There was also a concern on our lack of reclamation of the existing non-conforming operation. I will commit voluntarily to reclaim and cede in the next 12 months approximately six acres of disturbed land. There is a map in there which indicates which area. Please note that the berms on the exterior will have to stay in place for safety issues.
I mean, 30 seconds.
Concluding, I've submitted substantial evidence supporting its request for conditional use permit to conduct mineral, mineral extraction on the property. This is a superior site for the extraction. The proposed extraction on this site is to the north, moving away from the residences on Highway 12 and 18. There's virtually no other development. Materials being lowly sourced to a pre-existing permitted concrete plant, the material can be transported directly to Highway 12 without any disturbances on the county roads. The applicant is aware of no substantial evidence in opposition to this application. For example, there are no qualified experts documenting that applicant does not meet the necessary conditions for A1 exclusive land.
All right, thank you.
Krista Westerberg, representing Alex and Jamie Tuchendorf. I want to address one important point right away. Everyone has been talking like this new 2017 Act 67 applies to this application, including me, and that would limit the information you can consider with this permit, but that act does not apply. It only applies to CUPs that were applied for on or after November 29th, 2017, and this was applied for on November 9th. I will hand a copy of the act with that portion highlighted to Roger. So you can consider the CUP application under the old rules, you can credit the testimony of the neighbors and others just like you would have before, and you do not need substantial evidence for your decision as that term is used in the new statute, and also the applicant does not have to agree to permit conditions. You can put whatever conditions you feel are appropriate consistent with the record. Regardless, the Tuchendorfs have presented you with their testimony and substantial documentation as to why the CUP. and substantial documentation as to why the CUP should be denied. I appreciate the committees deferring this, but unfortunately in the intervening weeks, we have not worked out our differences with the applicant or the county. And the testimony that you have heard has been completely inconsistent with the experience of the Tuchendorfs and the other neighbors. I'm not going to go through everything. I know we've given you a lot, but the report of Craig Hungerford documented the Tuchendorfs' loss of property value due to this operation, existing operation, to less than half of its purchase price and we do not feel that expanding the operation even further would assist matters. The updated staff report is dismissive of Mr. Hungerford's report. It says that it evaluates the property, the Tuchendorfs' property, as an industrial use, not a residential use, but that is the point. Mr. Hungerford determined that the disturbances to the Tuchendorfs are so great that the property has no longer, has any use as a residence, only as an industrial property. Staff points to a sale down the road that was purportedly not affected by this existing site in terms of property value, but Mr. Hungerford explained in a letter that we provided to you that this house is farther away, it's 800 feet away and not as affected by the project and not importantly as affected by the haul road that goes from Highway 12 and 18 to the quarry and the concrete plant. And that haul road is only 80 feet from the Tuchendorfs' home. 80 feet, I had a little fun with Google Maps today and measured. 80 feet is the distance from the doors to this building to the middle, not even to the middle of MLK Junior Boulevard. It's very close and there's no berm there between those two things. The applicant provided some truck numbers, we did submissions and said, for example, that it has about 400 trucks per month in the summer going up and down that haul road and that doesn't even, that's just concrete loads. It doesn't even count gravel and dirt. And I don't know how that many trucks at that close of a distance couldn't reduce your property value. By the way, this new information was not available to the town when it's made its decision, so we suggest that this be remanded for them to consider and make another recommendation for you. And it certainly was not available to the public at the time of the first notice of public hearing. Regardless, the applicant supplied its own appraisal, as you just heard, but that appraiser never went to the property, the Tuchendorfs' property, the property it was appraising and it never visited, he never visited when the mine was in operation. It didn't look at the loss of property value like Mr. Hungerford did. His qualifications are explained to you in the materials we've submitted before. And also independently of either of those two individuals, the town assessor has valued the Tuchendorfs at 20 to 30% less value than it was when they purchased the home. Expanding this use, as I said, is not going to make it better. The conditions the county has suggested are not going to address this. For neighbors like the Tuchendorfs who are very close or even those who are farther away, Enriquez family is about equidistant from the existing mine site to where the new one would be and this is what they can hear from their home, just this constant noise. I don't know if that's audible to you. Just constant mechanical noise as well as the back keepers. The, I've only talked to you about property value to date, but this discussion is sort of emblematic of all of these issues and these concerns. For example, the reclamation, the strip they're proposing to reclaim is not even the worst part of the property and doesn't address that concern. Door Creek, maybe there won't be, sorry?
Four minutes.
We have a minute.
Okay, there, maybe there won't be runoff to Door Creek, but it could be affected by well pumping. High-capacity well pump could draw water away from that creek. We've been very frustrated, I'm sorry to say, with our interactions with staff on this. I've heard things like, well, it's just too bad these houses are here. The county needs concrete and gravel. This operator is not as bad as some other ones and, you know, the feeling we get is basically the Tuchendorfs just have to take one for the team or that their concerns aren't valid. And for the reasons we've stated, we just, we proved all those things are not true. So we don't, we request that you do not permit this facility to expand. It doesn't need your conditions, the county's conditions, particularly condition two and the six that apply to all uses in the county. I can answer any questions and I also, Enriquez family had some additional petition signatures they wanted me to provide to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, also, so registering in support of the CUP 02405 are Buck Sweeney, Kirk Ellenfeldt, Wade Cottrell has spoken to us. And in opposition are Krista Westerberg, Andrea Enriquez, Jamie Tuchendorf, Alex Tuchendorf and Otto Odison are, have filled out registering in opposition to this CUP. That's the petition and here's the petition that was supported. Okay, questions, Roger, did you?
There has been two pieces of information presented to the committee. The committee has an option whether or not to place those into the official record.
How long will we put him in?
A second.
We have a motion and a second to enter into the record, the two items that have been presented to us tonight. One is the highlighted item in the recently passed legislation and the second is the petitions. Any discussion on the motion to have those entered into the record? Say none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And so those two additional items will be included in the record.
Roger.
Staff has prepared 30 conditions. Staff feels that the set conditions meet the six standards for obtaining a conditional use permit and also meet the concerns addressed at the public hearing.
Can I ask questions?
Supervisor Lofflin would like to ask a question. Go ahead.
Have you reviewed the 30 conditions that we're talking about?
Yes, we have.
And are you satisfied with them?
Yes, we are.
And we will comply with them?
Yes, we will.
Thank you, Roger. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve this CUP.
On the motion to approve this CUP?
I'll second.
We have a second further discussion on the motion to approve this CUP.
I have questions. Because I'm a little conflicted on this. We have two opposing appraisals. One, you know, the applicant, they're, in their remarks, they challenged the appraisal of the opposition. Is it not state accredited? I don't, you don't.
Oh, time. An appraiser will always say that, especially in a case like this, that, you know, you're not credentialed for this type of a responsibility. The other one will say, well, your comps are not even close to where they should be.
Well, and that's the other part of my question in regards to the opposition's appraisal. The appraiser saying, you know, the highest and best use isn't residential. That's why there's this very different valuation based on.
There's some over there.
Go ahead, Supervisor Lofflin.
I'm on the airport commission and I've heard these complaints about the airport noise. Well, the real question is, who came first? Was the airport?
That was one of my questions.
No, I was just going to say that people move into the community that they're moving into, they have a responsibility to do some checking. If there's, we had that issue not too long ago on another petition. So I have a hard time, especially after the people who have had near the airport were complaining about the noise. When you know about it, you have.
Hauling counts. The hauling counts, annual, or those.
As I recall, the hauling counts, the hauling counts are way down.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
Relative to.
Five years' dollars, right.
So yeah, but anyway, one of my other questions was, was like, so the property owners that are most vocal in opposition here, they, they came along after the existence of the current mineral extraction operation.
Yes, the current mineral extraction operation started in the late 1960s. It was registered as a non-conforming mineral extraction site. It has been active quite frequently. It had several owners. The three lots that are to the south of the mineral extraction site, they were approved in 2000. Houses were constructed on those, I think, in 2002, 2003. And Mr. Tuchendorf purchased the property in, I believe, 2005, if my staff, if I remember my staff report.
Have we maximized the space for placement of the driveway relative to the Tuchendorfs' property?
This is the only access to the mineral extraction site. Also, the residential houses use this as an access as well.
And that road was there in 2000 and earlier?
It was, it's been there since the 1960s.
Can I answer that question more fully?
Well, actually, before I forget, this other question I had and that is the explanation on noise levels and there's a remark there noting that staff had made some analysis or observation about noise levels and found it to be indistinguishable. How is that accurate?
Yeah, I was the one that put that together.
So for the opposition's attorney, quick question on the driveway placement. And so is it, is it a shared driveway at this point?
That's right.
And do you, is there any, is there any opportunity for? My original question was, have we maximized the space to try? Is there any way we can relocate the mineral extraction access?
I'm not sure, I'm not aware of it.
There, with the site, they were, the operator was looking to move it further to the west. That would have placed the driveway here, but due to opposition from neighboring property owners, the operator did not pursue that option.
So the residents, those three houses, use that as their primary ingress, degress?
That is correct, sir.
Do they have an easement for that?
We could not find any easement. There were, on the certified survey map, it basically states that an access easement would be provided on a future document and that future document cannot be found.
So who plows it?
You, you maintain it and plow it?
The homeowners plow it because we're not active in the wintertime.
Oh, that makes sense.
They plow it.
But in the summertime, I mean, you do the maintenance of it?
Yeah, that's part of our watering plan. You know, we water up to where there's no dust. It's asphalt all the way in past the homes.
Okay.
So it's very.
Right, you mentioned that first. Good.
Okay, supervisor Miles?
Petitioner, is there, is, um, is there use of a high-capacity well?
Yes.
And how long has that been in place?
It was there before I purchased it.
Other questions for staff or the petitioner or the opposition? Just a reminder that we've had a public hearing and we suspended our rules to hear from the petitioner and from the opposition represented by Ms. Westerberg. Any further discussion on the motion to approve the CUP 02405?
With the 30 conditions?
With the 30 conditions. Thank you, Roger.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had one other question. There was, in the opposition's information, made reference to the fact that some of those conditions drafted in the staff recommendations were different and more permissive than the town's conditions. Did you review that, Roger?
I don't believe so. These were prepared by senior planner Pam Andros and I believe she had a copy of the town conditions and I believe they match.
Supervisor Lofflin?
A question. The operator indicated that from a noise abatement standpoint, he is making some pretty drastic changes to keep the noise out of the residences' decibel ability. Is that in the conditions of the approval, do you know? Have you put anything in there like that? I mean, because I think that's critical for, for compliance.
Is that a question for us, Senator?
I think that's.
Buck, if you can answer it?
Sure, I can answer that. I'm not sure Roger's looking at it now, but we would have no objection to putting that in that directional backup alarm. So what a directional backup alarm is, instead of going out in a wider range, it goes in the direction where that piece of equipment is going so there gets less, it's less of a noise on the outgoing surrounding. So Wade has ordered all of those. We gave Roger a copy of that from Miller Bradford, so he has a copy of those that have been ordered, put on all the equipment that we are operating there.
Okay.
Number nine is the operator shall use multi-frequency backup alarms to minimize disturbance to surrounding properties and trucks will be routed to avoid unnecessary backups.
Thank you. So will those, will those be installed before the pit starts operating again?
The other's starting now?
Okay, so those are in place?
That'll be on the equipment that we own. If we, obviously if somebody comes in there with a different piece of equipment to repair an engine or do something, we can't control what backup alarms they have. They have to be OSHA compliant, but we don't control them. Our vehicles will have all those.
Those have been installed already?
It's in the process up, but we're not active out there. All the equipment from there is actually in my shop as we go through them. We're installing them. There are a couple were on back order, but we won't start without them being.
You won't start active production without the new backup.
Okay, any further discussion or questions for those present? Supervisor, Tom?
Attorney Westerberg, we're trying to figure out the issues between the town versus the county conditions. Can you provide specific?
When we wrote our initial opposition, the county did not yet receive the town's recommended conditions and had come up with their own and at that time they did not match. The county supplemental staff report did match up their conditions to the town's. So the statement in that former letter has changed, yeah.
And I just found that, yeah, the only difference that remains I think is in the fencing, which I think county's condition is typically it's more extraction.
And then to follow up on the question about who came first, when the Tuchendorfs bought their property in 2005, the mine was much smaller.
She wasn't asked that question, point of order. She was not asked that question. She can't just volunteer.
Perhaps the audience can't call it a point of order though. That would be a problem.
If I have to leave to question, I can, I will take it, but otherwise I will sit down.
Supervisor Tom, what are you asking the question? Were you asking a question?
I was asking a question, just a question. Oh, we're sorting out the differences here. As far as the conditions. The question related to who came first and some confirmation about when the Tuukandorfs arrived?
Yes, thank you. The Tuukandorfs bought their property in 2005, and the mine site was much smaller, and it was located farther north of their property. And there was also no concrete batch plant there at the time. So it was much less intrusive, and they didn't have a problem with it for several years. Thank you.
But was...
Supervisor...
But was, was the pit area defined at that time, the future possible pit area? Staff?
Yes. In the second packet, I believe there is a picture of the site. That's the 2005 aerial photo showing the excavated area, so these, the driveway, the single-family houses. It's kind of, you could see trucks actually taking the topsoil off of this area, and this is fully involved in extraction.
So that was a matter recorded before the homes were there?
No, that is, the 2005 aerial photo is when Mr. Tuukandorf purchased his property.
But homes weren't there?
The homes were there.
Other questions for, on the motion to approve the CUP 2405? Say none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? And it is approved. Okay, next, we have plots and certified survey maps.
The Klosterman is a three-lot certified survey map located in the town of Middleton, section 30. This is a lot line adjustment and also creating one additional lot, which is not associated with the original petition. That's why it's before you, before approval. Just a couple of things to mention, that there's no sensitive environmental features identified on proposed lots, and it is identified that the future land is meant as residential. And you'll also have in your packet of information memo that Kurt Cottrell put together in regards to this.
I'm making a motion to approve the CSM.
We have a motion and a second to approve the CSM. Any discussion? Say none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it is approved. Next, we have preliminary plat for Cardinal Prairie in the town of Middleton.
Yeah, this preliminary plat located in the town of Middleton consists of 13 lots and also three outlots, 18 acres in size. Current zoning is A1. There is no proposed rezoning petition with this. This is before you for acceptance and scheduled for a future consideration. Most likely will be in the March 13 agenda for conditional approval. And then in addition, I've also kind of outlined the conditions that you would most likely see as placed on that agenda.
And is Todd Zupski here? Oh, there he is. Did you want to speak?
Sure. I'm not sure I need to say anything, but I was told that maybe a question as to whether I would confirm that part of the outlot path would, that would be built on. And I'm ready to do that. Do you have any more questions? No?
Any questions?
No, more of acceptance and schedule for future consideration.
Second? We have a motion for acceptance and scheduled future consideration. Any further discussion? Say none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And we'll move forward. Thank you. Thanks for coming. Next is preliminary plat upside ridge.
Yeah, this is before you for certification, non-objection. It's located in the village of Cottage Grove, consists of 16 lots, not quite 38 acres. No, no parkland is being shown as far as major highways or corridors. You have Highway BB to the north. There were no drainage channels shown on this particular plat, and I have a feeling that's because this is a preliminary plat and not the final. Other development, I'm seeing out lot one is being dedicated to the public for stormwater management purposes.
Certification of non-objection? Second?
We have a motion and a second for certification of non-objection. Any discussion? Say none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And we have certified non-objection. We have no resolutions or ordinance amendments. Next item before us is a discussion of, in response to the written request to revoke conditional use permit 2175 for the operation of a concrete batch plant, Rocky Rights LLC, 2294 U.S. Highway 1218, in the town of Cottage Grove. Roger?
Yes, the zoning and land regulation committee has received a letter from Alex and Jamie Tuukandorf requesting the revocation of conditional use permit 2175. This conditional use permit was approved in 2011 and allows for the operation of a concrete batch plant on the property. The Tuukandorfs claim that there have been persistent violations with the operation, and the operation no longer meets the standards for the conditional use permit. Before, included in your packet is the letter requesting revocation, a letter from the landowner opposing the revocation. There is the staff report, as well as a supplemental information that was submitted on February 22nd supporting the revocation. As part of this, the staff conducted a review of the conditions of approval. There are 12 conditions of approval. We have reviewed each one of those and have not found any violations with regards to the conditions that were approved.
So wishing to speak in opposition to the revocation are Buck Sweeney, Kirk Ellenfelt, and Wade Catell. Wishing to speak in support of the revocation are Krista Westerberg and Alex Tuukandorf. And are you presenting options that the committee has? Because you listed as a discussion on the agenda, I just didn't want to... It's just discussion. I would emphasize, then, we are not making a decision on revocation, as it's only listed as a discussion of...
Yes, the committee may take two actions. The first action, if they feel that there is enough information to support revocation, staff suggests setting a date to have a public hearing for the formal process of revocation. If the, if the committee does not find that there is enough information to support revocation, staff would suggest that the request be dismissed.
Supervisor Lofflin?
I haven't heard anything that would warrant shutting a business down, and even close. So I'm, I'm, I'd like to end this now and allow him to go in at 2018 with a clear understanding that he doesn't have Big Brother looking over your, looking over your shoulder. So what was I going to do? What was the second thing I could have done?
Make a motion to dismiss.
I'm going to make a motion to dismiss.
Procedural question? Did, it was noticed as a discussion, so wouldn't that decision be made at a future date?
It, it's for a discussion. If you would like to provide that at a future date, I don't believe it's necessary. This is a letter to the, the discussion is a letter to this committee requesting that a formal process take place.
And, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, I think, just from a public, posting of public meetings standpoint, I understand, you know, you're, you're part of view that...
Yeah.
...put behind us, but from a public records...
Because of the word discussion?
Yeah, it doesn't list it as discussion and possible action.
Is committee action? It's items requiring committee action, so it's either...
Discussion of written requests under...
Under...
I'm reading the item title.
Yeah. H is items requiring committee action. So we're having a discussion whether to consider the revocation or future meeting or not.
It's under the section H, so it's requiring committee action. I was just reading the title of the act itself.
I'm going to second Supervisor Lofflin's motion.
Okay, so just so we know that we have a motion and a second to not take action on the request for revocation. Okay, so then, all those in favor of not taking any further action, we will not have a revocation hearing in the future. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Say nay? And so we, we will not have a revocation hearing, and I understand it would be four to one?
Correct.
Okay. Roger? Certified survey maps.
Those are the ones that have been signed and recorded, except I think there's one that has not been recorded yet, and that's the 1016 review. I think the surveyor is still waiting to be paid. That's why it's not recorded. But I've signed it.
Anything else?
That's it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Any good jobs, Stan?
Yeah, thank you.
There's a VHS program tonight at 8:00, and a...